Hey, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, August fifth. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide roll call.
Commissioner Quinn.
President.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
All right, we do not have an invocation scheduled for this morning, but if you please stand and join me in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, public comment. All right, seeing none. Approval of the agenda before I approve the agenda, I have some additions this week. Um, I have um, an opioid settlement document discussion at the beginning with IT purchase order. And our IT director, uh, ten thirty K camp will be joining us. Um, and then Mark Seltner, another bullet point from Memorial Hall on him. Um, followed by twelve forty-five, we will have a Roden Bridge workshop for approximately an hour. And when we wrap that one up, we will go right into a budget workshop with the finance director. So with those additions, I look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So we've seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
All aye.
Passes three to zero. Consent agenda, uh, we have the commission meeting minutes from last week, which would have been July twenty ninth. Um, and then our finance director will give a reveal.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, we don't have any payroll this week. The expense total for Wednesday, August sixth, accounts payable check date is eighty-four thousand, six twenty-seven ninety. Um, and out of that total, credit card total is one thousand seventy-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. There is no negative cash balances on this AP run.
Thank you. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. Hey, um, next we have commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell?
Last week I attended the mental health town hall in Leavenworth, uh, put on by the guidance center. A lot of good information. Local information, state, um, funding information, just all around good presentation and you know, something that we need to be mindful of is, uh, the direction that we're taking mental health, so.
Uh, we have the Atchison County fairers this week, uh, please come out and enjoy the sights, watch the kids forage projects. Uh, come out and eat, have a good time. The parade is Friday night. Come out and see us.
Okay, um, I also attended the town hall for the guidance center put on last Thursday. Um, it was great, just the opportunity to listen to, um, to them summarize what's going on and in our county as well as surrounding counties. Having the ability to network with, um, Leavenworth County Commissioners. The Amberwell leaders were there, um, Leavenworth County Sheriff, there were just, it was a roomful of people, um. And it was great because we had the opportunity to network before and after, um, the presentation. So learned a lot, brought back some notes, um, that we can, um, visit about here. So that was good. Um, and then on Friday, uh, went down to welcome our Northeast Kansas multi-county health executive director started Friday. So, um, that's exciting. She will be housed, um, her home will be here in Atchison. Um, so looking forward to, uh, having a a welcome night for her, hopefully in the month of August, um, gonna get some invites out so people can stop by a meter, so. That's all I have. Um, no presentations, uh, petitions or proclamations. I received documents, um, Pat had submitted for our opioid, um, to be part of the opioid settlement. Um, to receive funds. Um, I don't.
Yeah, this, this one's a little different from the others because of the way it came about. This is with, uh, Purdue, uh, pharmaceutical and, uh, gosh, what's the name of the family? The related family, um. I'm drawing a blank.
Sackler?
Yeah.
Sackler.
Um, Purdue Pharma had filed bankruptcy and this is the settlement that was agreed to, and excuse me, was approved by the bankruptcy court. And so all we're doing is opting into, uh, participating in that. Uh, there is really no way to opt out of it. I mean, you can opt out and just not participate, but usually if you opt out of a class action, you have the right to file your own lawsuit. Well, with the bankruptcy filing, you don't have that right in this situation. They, there are some, uh, numbers that were released, but I, I don't actually know all of the specifics and can't tell either what they're going to receive from this because it's a payout over, uh, I think it was a ten-year period. And it's just you'll participate under the single formula that's been used in other distributions. Um, I don't see that there's a day on sign to accepting it or to opting in. Participating. And if you don't participate, you just won't receive the funds from this settlement.
So with that, I just, um, what is the clerk's office phone number, please?
Six zero three zero.
Yeah, I prepared one and had that in there. There are two attachments.
Oh, it came electronically.
Oh, you got that one.
Yep, so I was just going to, if that would be okay to sign that?
That's perfect.
Okay. Um, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the document, um, containing documentation to participate in the new national opioid settlement as explained by our county council.
So move. So.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Access three to zero and it has been adopted and signed. Okay, next we have our IT director, um, with the purchase order.
This is just a renewal for our licensing for our virtual cluster essentially for maintenance and licensing for VMware. Uh, it's a budget expense expected, so I did go up this year and it's probably gonna go up again next year, but account for that.
Okay. All right, so this was in your twenty twenty-five budget, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our IT director to twenty-seven Virtual Consulting LLC for VMware, uh, vSphere Standard for a one-year term in the amount of three thousand eight fifty-eight sixty-two. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So then I can show you.
Okay, Mark Seltner, Finance Director, twenty twenty-five budget overview in Memorial Hall.
As, um, I'll try to be a little fast. This is the first month that we're doing this, so no, just a little short on time.
So moving forward, how long do you want so we can make sure that we
Well.
And maybe we can gauge today, like just do your thing and then we can make sure we know if it's thirty minutes or forty-five.
So being the first time, um, like this, there's whole one page describing like all of our funds.
Good.
So that I won't go through every time, but anyway, I guess we'll go see. So, um, we're wrapped revenue wise. Um, add form tax remaining to collect about five hundred and sixty-five thousand, which is about ninety-five percent collected. There's still collections that come in every day. Um, people pay their taxes, um, every day. So some have late penalties, some don't. Um, just depends on the year that they're paying, um, or if they're paying current year, there was that resolution that you had to waive some of the fees for a while. Um, so anyway, that's about where we were at last year at this time. Um, so it gets right on track. Um, vehicle tax remaining to collect is just a little over four hundred and ten thousand, which is sixty percent. So August out of where we're at, um, in the year, August out of December is about sixty to sixty-four percent. So that's about good, uh, where, where we should be, um, as vehicles are renewed. Taxes are paid, so that's fine EMS collections through the end of July is, um, a little over four hundred and thirty-one thousand. So they have projected six hundred and fifty thousand. So they're at sixty-six percent. Um, that's because the six hundred and fifty thousand offsets the EMS budget. So if we do not exceed six hundred and fifty thousand, or if we do not hit or exceed that number, there'll be a shortfall. So we need to make sure we hit that number. Uh, for July, two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars was received for sales tax. That goes to solid waste and the joint communications dispatch budgets. This number is higher than average, but we also had a large event in Atchison in July. So that's why I anticipate that number is larger.
Um, what did you say was the reason?
There was a large event at the Amelia Fest was in July.
Oh.
So more people here, the more people pay sales tax.
I didn't hear.
Can we, I was just curious, do you, like, I know we're asking for July, but what in comparison?
June was about hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Also, I was thinking about these numbers, uh, there was kind of anticipation, maybe like car sales and things were higher in the last couple of months due to thinking about tariffs and stuff, people buying stuff. So I know nationally of here national trends are, like, people are shopping for school supplies and stuff, or you're anticipating it, so I'm hoping that it'd be nice for that number to stay that high, but
Mm-hmm.
I guarantee it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think so probably either. Um, so yeah, it's, it's up a little higher than the other previous month, so that's good. It helps, um, kind of get that money back that we allocated to those two budgets a little sooner. Okay, so the expense budget overall out of all of the budgets, we're at sixty-one percent. So like I said above, that's pretty spot on where we're, where we should be at in August. Um, anything over sixty-three percent would kind of mean that we are expensing too rapidly, too much, too quickly. Um, given there's some restraints on that too, like you might have a big expense, you're trying to upfront first, but that's not the case here, so everything's right on track or where we should be. There's two appropriations that we still have to pay out, forty thousand dollars to the Health Department and sixty-nine thousand, two sixty-seven to Extension Council. Um, that is with board approval, so the, my plan is to come in September with a purchase order, um, to have the board approve those. Um, looking through the department's budgets, I did not see any red flags. Uh, they look normal. There's no excessive spending. There's nothing over budget. Um, it seems adequate. So moving on to current cash balances, solid waste fund at the end of July, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand in it. And joint communications dispatch has about a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, remember last week we transferred, um, five hundred thousand from the reserve fund into each of these. So we split it, um, and got them back in the black. And then we moved this two hundred and seventeen thousand and split that between both of them from July sales tax received. So they're operating with good cash at the moment. Um, I have a note here about, I anticipate being able to transfer some back to reserve after the August sales taxes posted, but there's a, I had a comment about maybe we wait till the end of the year to move it all back instead of moving it month by month. Because what if you move some? And then it goes negative again, and then we're moving it back and it might just get messy, so uh, maybe we can look at November, see where we're at, and then maybe the first part of December and see where we're at, uh, we can think about that too. And then I, in the email I sent you guys, I included a fund status report, and those are totals per fund through uh, Wednesday, August sixth, so through tomorrow, which would encompass, um, our accounts payable run. So in the fund status report, it is broken down by categories. So you have general funds. These are all of our operating funds, tax holding funds, um, prior to the distribution as well as other funds that would not classify, classify into some of the other categories. And you have balances there.
Where, where did you send this? It wasn't with the other, it's on eight four.
Monday.
Maybe small, yeah.
It's titled twenty twenty-five budget overview and fund balances.
I've got that, but I don't.
Yeah, it's that attachment at the top. Uh, that's a reply.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so go down. Monday. There it is, this one. And then if you double click.
Reply. Thank you.
Yep.
So, um, those are your general funds. You have special revenue funds, um, which are outside of Atchison County as the county's not able to contribute anything towards these funds such as municipalities fights addiction fund, which is the opioid settlement that you talked about earlier. Um, other funds in this category are federal funds like LATCF, COVID, Spark, ARPA. Um, which LATCF, COVID, Spark, ARPA is all over, so those funds have a zero balance. Those will fall off at the end of twenty-five. Um, so the only thing listed there would be the municipalities fights addiction fund. Um, there's capital project funds, those are like the reserve fund. Um, solid waste capital outlay, joint communications capital outlay, noxious weed capital outlay. There's a couple of other funds in there that are zero that will fall off at the end of twenty-five. Um, there was a state grant fund that we got from the local hospital that was used that we were a sub recipient of, that we had to control the money that they, uh, spent and received, so that's zero now. There are sheriff's special funds. They have individualized uses. I did ask the sheriff to kind of give me some background on some of those, and he did. Um, I just haven't had a time to review them adequately prior to today's meeting, so I'll look at those and I can discuss those later. Um, the attorney special funds. Um, after digging into these a little bit more, I found, um, specialized uses for these that are tied to state statutes, uh, so basically it's money received from the state for fees from court cases. Some of the fees received then get paid out to other state agencies and some of the money is retained here for special uses. And so I can talk about those at a later time too. When there's more time, uh, the delinquent tax funds is a, another big category. Um, all of these funds except two are closed levy funds, meaning that each of these funds used to have their own levy. Um, kind of like at the general fund and noxious weed fund now have their own levy, all of these used to. They were closed and then combined with the general fund um, instead of levying a tax for each of these funds. Um, so at the end of the year, any money that's deposited into these, there's a statute that allows us to move that into the general fund. Because there are still taxes owed that these were levied for. Um, so like in uh, it, this year there was a a Roden Bridge Fund, Fund One Hundred, it received forty-two dollars. So there was someone delinquent tax that that was still owed on, so when they paid their taxes, it came into this fund and then we just move it into the general fund. Um.
So if like if you have a tax sale and it doesn't meet the taxes owed, it sells for a hundred dollars instead of say there's two thousand dollars of taxes. So is that all proportioned out if the that each fund that that was levied for takes a reduction by the same percentage? I mean.
Um, that's prorated by the treasurer.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's, that's what happens, but the treasurer does.
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering how they arrived at the, the new.
But that's not with this. The, this money is if somebody hasn't paid their taxes for a few years and then they pay that in full.
Oh, paid in full, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they, they pay them late.
So anyway, we have to count for all those, so that's what these funds are for. Um, they, they still have to exist until all taxes are paid, those funds. There's two funds in this grouping that, um, you had a question about earlier today about the alcohol tax.
Yeah, we learned that at the guidance center from, uh, Leavenworth County.
So when we receive money from the state for the alcohol tax, it goes into Fund One Thirty-eight and One Forty-eight. Um, Fund One Forty-eight is titled Parks and Rec, but it's, that's how it has always been titled. It's like a portion of the alcohol tax goes into Fund Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Um, those monies just get rolled into the general fund at the end of the year.
Hmm.
Um, but we can also dive into that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Um, there's community corrections funds. Um, all of these funds are tied directly to grant funding received from Kansas Department of Corrections to operate community corrections here in Atchison County. Um, next one is tax distribution funds. Oh, I missed one, sales tax funds, but this contains the sports complex and the countywide sales tax fund. And the next one after that is tax distribution funds. These are all the taxing entities um, that gets distributed throughout the distribution process. It always will zero out unless there's a special case that happens with it. There are some such as drainage districts and a couple others that do not zero out uh, because they have a special, um, circumstance. And then senior village funds is our last one. All of these are zero. They will fall off at the end of twenty-five. Um, we don't have senior village any longer and these other funds that used to be tied to senior village, the board had made a motion to and approve to move all of them into the senior village reserve. And then that was moved into the reserve fund, so they'll all fall off. Um, I think that's all I had. Do you have any questions for follow-up or?
Here is a word I've never seen. Fun nine thirty-two state Eli Mansari building.
Yeah.
That.
I don't have an answer for you, but it's a special state fund that goes directly to the state. I can look at that and provide you enough.
Well, that's a mouthful.
And with the state education building fund too?
It's the same.
So they create how much we have to levy?
Yes. Through motor vehicle taxes.
Motor vehicle.
Motor vehicle.
Interesting. Those are good numbers to know too, when telling the state that we need help at a county level.
It's a lot of information, so, um, just understanding our funds is something we're
Appreciate that.
Get better. Okay. Um, then you had something about Memorial Hall?
Yeah, you asked for ten minutes. Um, hold on, let me find the email.
Yeah.
I think it was for their outlined expenses. Um, here we go. Can we have this for the agenda, ten minutes? It was from Wednesday, the thirtieth, one forty-five.
I don't know. The only thing I can think of is, I asked Brian and Cindy about how much to put towards like the twenty thousand out of the maintenance budget, if we could use that and reclassify it as Memorial Hall to cover these expenses. And there was some, some things with that, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
And we need to make sure the RFP for mowing that we include if.
Okay.
I don't remember if he does that in September or October for the first of the year, but. Okay, we can come back and.
Okay.
Figure that's.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, so next we have Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent. Consideration of PO for Schwab Eaton grade grading and drainage and consideration of PO for Schwab Eaton Phase Three Ottawa Red.
How's everybody today?
Good.
Good, so we've had some confusion on these POs, so what I'm doing now, sending in your emails, but I'm also gonna have a copy because you guys deal with so much and like months ago, we signed an agreement. So I have the agreement for the, uh, grading for the new site plan. And it was, it was signed around May fourteenth, if you want to look at that, it's signed by the commission.
Thank you emailed.
Yeah, but I wanna, because I don't know if everybody always gets their emails or whatever.
Yeah.
But I want to try to find a way that, uh, I can keep you guys. You know, you don't know what you, you, it's been a while. So when there's a question about the PO, I've ninety-nine percent of the time, we have it like it's supposed to, only in case of emergency. So I just want to kind of go over that with you guys. So this is for fifteen thousand dollars on a good grading plan. I just talked to Judd today. This is out of Senior Village Sale. Uh, and we're getting about two weeks from possibly having it ready to bid. So I just need that signed.
I'm adding fifteen thousand to the tracker.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's in there. You gotta look hard.
No.
Right, I probably should have highlighted it, but.
All of seven control C.
And I have a, just so you know, I have a team meeting at ten thirty to go over a lot of that stuff with BG and and the.
So this is just for the grading plan.
This is just the grading plan.
Okay, but this is also for them to bid, to do the bidding.
Yes, yes.
So it's to prepare project specifications, publish bidding documents in online plan room and respond to better questions and develop.
Yes.
So it's.
It's more than just, yes, and I just talked to him and I wanted a, uh, engineered estimate. So he'll be, he'll be getting those, so we'll have the idea of what we think it's gonna be.
Okay. All right, so I'd look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our Roden Bridge Superintendent for the grading plan with Schwab Eaton for new shop for Atchison County Road and Bridge, um, and the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
So.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Passes two to one.
All right, the second one is Ottawa Phase Three, which will be our two miles, our initial two miles, uh, and we signed this in May for a hundred and fifty-six thousand for the design. Well, this is from two thirtieth to forty-sixth, pardon me, uh, the second part. And it was signed the May twentieth by the commission. It's for a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, kind of a contractual.
Of the twenty twenty-five budget.
Yes.
Yeah. All right, I look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our Roden Bridge Superintendent, um, to Schwab Eaton for the Ottawa Road Phase Three Road Rehabilitation Shoulder Widening and Drainage Structures from two thirtieth to two forty-six road. From two thirty to two forty six road and the amount a hundred and fifty six thousand. Um to come out of the Rodenbridge contractual budget for twenty twenty five. Moved in second and all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. So they are widening the shoulders then.
Yes, yes. Uh and then right quick, as I gotta go. So later today, I'd like to discuss our POs to where we're all on the same page. If we start with one total amount, whether you guys would like it to be every time there's a pay. Do we just use the same P O or how, or I'd like for us to to talk about that later today and try to. Get that to where it's all always the same and we all understand it. Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, next uh we have um gentleman from K Camp, come on up. Uh thank you for joining us this morning.
For having me.
And I'm sorry, um can you? I didn't have the email pulled up. So your name again, sir. I'm sorry.
Oh, it's no problem. My name is Patrick Smith.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I'm the risk manager at K Camp and we like to personally congratulate all our members that. Meet the criteria for our risk management achievement award. We're supposed to be talking.
No, it's right up there.
Okay, so we like to personally congratulate all of our members that are. Uh meeting the criteria for our risk management achievement awards and of course, Atchison County is one of those members. Um we know you can't prevent all property loss and liabilities. But we do appreciate the steps that Atchison County and the Risk Management Committee have been taken to reduce the risk of property loss. And liability related claims that are normally reported to K Camp. So we would like to present this check to you guys. In the amount of three thousand seven hundred and forty six dollars thirty six cents for. Our appreciation and your continued membership with K Camp. And uh your efforts in reducing and minimizing the cost of coverage for uh your county.
Awesome. Thank you. We appreciate that and our safety committee that is, they're the ones that. The reason why we received this, so um if you wouldn't mind taking a picture with the safety committee.
Yeah, that's fine. We we thank all the staff that, you know, helped out.
Yes, thank you guys.
Meetings and training and all that.
You guys can stand in the back in front of the logo if you'd like. Thank you.
Is it gonna be just the safety committee or do you want us?
Yeah, I'm not.
Oh, it's not like that's, I'm not the. Okay, oh, that's wonderful. You guys are gonna get closer. Come on. It doesn't matter. There's a lot of stuff in it. Okay, ready? Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Have a good day.
Thanks to the committee.
I think it would be important to send that to have how much we got for the. Also enough to Jody to put on there. Okay, um next we have, okay, we're ahead of schedule. Okay, so. If you guys don't mind, if I could share with you my rough draft of the R and R question or survey. Cuz I'm gonna need your help. I'll print two copies. Um I've done. First version, second version. I was trying to do a third version cuz I'm really struggling um. With how to, let me just print it and you guys will be able to. See what I'm sitting survey questions right here, second draft. I guess I want third draft. And then a reminder too, we have our uh health department meeting tomorrow night, right? Is that tomorrow night? Tomorrow night, five o'clock here. To go over our bylaws and resolutions.
Five o'clock?
That what we said?
I think that's what I do.
I didn't have a time. Oh, I guess I did. I had that. And it's gonna be here?
Okay, so please keep in mind and remember this is a rough. Um I I struggled with here. Yeah, I have. I struggled with the first question uh regarding zoning because I'm not, like it's one of those things of. I don't wanna steer, but I feel like I'm steering, so I need help um with that one. And number two, I felt like was pretty easy for me because I totally believe in N E M S sales tax. And Mark was um double checking my numbers, so he's gonna help tweak um. Because when you start compounding interest in number two, it could be more than what I figured, so. Yeah, so anyway, if you guys want to read through that, this is just this like a. This was my task to get kind of something going, but again. And sorry, I guess I haven't seen you guys since last week. If if you hate all of it, that's fine. I just, when I started trying to do scenarios, I didn't like how we had. Um listing each department and rating them from a one to five because I felt like. That's not gonna give us any useful information. Like if someone says the commissioners are a one, we're the worst, right? Like what is that gonna help us achieve like other than, you know what I mean? So I kind of took it a different direction with the third question utilizing the data that Mark had given us. About uh taxes. And then. Kind of explained it of do you think, are there any county services? That need improvement improvement and don't justify the ROI on your tax dollars? Like more of a general like, hey, tell us what you think without. Okay, so I can change that, but yeah.
So I mean.
I'm I'm just.
That needs to either be.
Cuz you hear like people are willing to pay if they see something in return versus. Paying and not seeing, you know, everything going to pop, I guess, is what I I was trying to. Without listing each individual department and having it go down a rabbit hole of. Well, you know, it cuz it's something's gonna stick out in your mind, right? Like of of all the things you do with the county, if if you think this needs improvement, you have the ability to explain that without. But I don't know. This is again, just a start to get us to a finish line next week. But I felt like I need a little bit of. With the first and the third.
So I will say that your numbers do check out.
Thank you. Good, thanks. And I think that's gonna be really huge for people to see how, you know. We have a plan or we could have. And 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 honestly, even if the the public were to say no. And we collect three hundred responses, I still think it's worth putting on the ballot to let everybody show up and and cast their vote. If they miss because with a three quarter cent sales tax for five years, I mean, that could offset seven point seven six mils, like that's huge. It's that's huge.
It's huge. It's a big deal.
And it's a need, a need that's not going away. Sorry, Eric.
Um I was gonna say like this here in this paragraph. If the word resolutions would be highlighted, so they realize it's not like a zoning thing, but it's a resolution. You know what I'm saying is because there's gonna. Read zoning here and then you come down. And if we're gonna switch to to resolutions. I think there ought to be a different, something to highlight that.
Yeah, I mean, just make notes and we can change it however you guys wanna change it. That's just literally a starting point.
Well, when there's so many different nuances, you need to point them out because they're gonna have one thing in mind. And then you're asking a different question. And then anything that's like, well, when you have the ROI, well, you're gonna either have to spell that out or uh when you use. Acronyms or things like that. I mean, I haven't really read all of it, but.
And maybe just and don't justify your tax dollars. I mean, you could just. Well, and also. I thought it was interesting and I don't know, let's see, where is the guidance center? I don't know if you heard this or if I misheard this, but when we were at that guidance center meeting. Um and they were talking about counties, they use statutory. In their discussion of and we're considering them discretionary. And then they pointed out the Kansas Constitution and showing the. So anyway, what I was saying is I don't know if maybe.
Well, you need to look at that. Well, I'm surprised. That we could have gotten away with what we did last year if it was statutory cuz. Uh let's see, where was it?
Well, they were funded. It was just funded with a different funding source. The county did give them money. So they would have a zero argument on that.
Right, I just, you you're right, you you funded them, but it it dropped. In twenty two it dropped and then you kept it the same, so I'm surprised. Back in twenty two, twenty three, when it dropped, they would have said something about.
Yeah, and there was one commission meeting probably last year or the year before where we went through every appropriation and got statutes for. I mean, we we did our homework on them.
Your due diligence then, okay.
Remember what year that was? Twenty three, maybe?
So I don't know how you guys wanna move forward. If you want me to email you my third draft and you guys can run with your. Tweaks of wording and then we finalize it next week or how how.
Well, I'm. Going back through here and all this and the first one there. And it says without zoning, we have learned there is no protection for your property, but then down here, we're talking about. Resolutions. Well, that's a protection. So I mean, it's.
But this, since our zoning meeting, we did have a that gentleman that inquired about economic development on large scale dairy. Swine and poultry farming and I specifically took his wording out of his email.
But that is a protection, so. I mean, it sounds like the only protection you can have is through zoning when. There are other protections you could use through resolution.
Well, so that was my understanding until we were faced with. There weren't. You know what I mean? Like I felt like we went full circle of of learning that there's not.
Yeah, we don't have any, but we could put them. That's what I'm saying that i- if there there is no protections right now.
So without, we could do a resolution without.
Cuz this statement here says without zoning, we have learned there is no protection for your property. It sounds like that's. The only protection you could have is zoning. That's where. Almost contradictory because here we're talking about, well, the possibility of using a resolution. And it it's not a blanket across the board, but there are protections, so I don't know how we.
But with the other example where people wanted protection from their property. From there was nothing we could do.
Yeah, there could be areas that zoning would be the one they want.
That's why it's hard, Eric. I was like, I can't. I can't summarize.
You'd have to get real specific and and a lot of these we probably wouldn't know until it came up, you know, you you there's so many different scenarios.
So, yeah, if you guys just wanna digest that and. Figure out.
Well, so Roger just brought up a new one. It gets uh, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? Power power. Uh source that you get from water, I uh what's this? Now, now, they 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 toyed around with powering cars with uh. Hydrogen. Energy and I guess it's they're looking at, that's a new. Issue in counties now is this hydrogen energy coming in and so I just. I don't know how.
Yeah, they covered that at K A C, what, three, two or three years ago of it's up and coming and.
So I guess. It's one more thing to add to it, but uh. Yeah, I I. You know where I stand on that.
I know and you know where I am. That's why I feel like mine's so negative. Like when you read this, like you just wanna say no. Because it's, I feel like I I didn't do a good job of trying to stay neutral because I can't find neutral. So I thought if you guys could help balance that out um.
I'll I'll look at it closer. I uh. I think uh I give people credit for understanding. You you know, I don't like this whole leading question leading. I I don't cuz you can. You can always answer no. You don't, you don't want zoning. You you feel like you're being led into something, just say no. Just tell me you don't like it. Something that could be and maybe I'm just not seeing it, you know. So there has to be a planning condition before anything gets going, right? And in that, you have a representative from every township.
So I just named them rural constituents cuz I wasn't sure we decided exactly what that looked like. So I just said rural, but yes, absolutely being the people at the table would be the ones affected by.
Well, I like the fact that, you know, to me that if I'm a. If I have a negative outlook on zoning, that helps me. It gives me a little more comfort knowing that somebody from my little township is willing to represent me.
So I had a gentleman tell me that. If if he could pick all the people he trusted from rural Axon County to sit. It would be way less scary than the unknown of. Who's gonna sit and make the rules for for everybody else, I guess. But our deadline's next week, right? Or the nineteenth is like final, final, cuz we are publishing at the twentieth, right? You were going live on the twentieth.
That's what yours, yeah.
So fine, like like basically just proofreading for misspelling would be on the on the nineteenth.
Yeah, I think so cuz it's a full.
Next week, we have to have it like.
Yeah, cuz there's to put it online, like you've gotta format it properly and have all of the the right things.
Okay.
So this passing a three-quarter cent sales tax for five years, wouldn't that be ten years?
Well, it could be. I just, after looking at the numbers, it's like, well, if I mean, in five years, you would have a pretty darn good handle on things for people to see the feeling. You could always extend it, right? Giving the opportunity to extend it, but or you could do ten years, whatever, like either way, I mean.
Well, can you, I didn't think you could just extend it.
Well, I mean, with a ballot question.
Yeah, you have to re-vote.
Vote.
And then that that's a odd but an odd year, it'd be hard to do the ballot question on a on the fifth year.
If you feel like it should be longer, we can do longer. I just thought, you know, it gives people the taste of what you're you're saying, like. And if they see the relief, then to vote to extend it would be, well, yeah, I mean. But if also, I couldn't help but think of our current one. We're on year two and we set it for ten years and we have a shortfall. So that was like concerning too of like readjusting, like you don't know what you don't know, I guess is. And you want it to have an impact to offset that people can feel and see and.
Something that, well, but you're, I don't know, speaking of speaking of EMS, something that I learned probably more than I, I should probably already know all this, but I learned quite a bit about his response to the news station, that letter. Did you read that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Uh, we have quite a few paramedics. At the time, the important, I've already staffed. And I just, I guess I wasn't aware that we had that many, it's like nine currently staffed.
Yeah.
So I I I guess in my mind, because of the because of the the fact that we've been looking at that so close the last seven months, at least anyway, or eight months. Um, I just thought that we were below that number, you know, for some reason, providing. Not that you know, there's not a need for longer, but I'm just saying that it's it's quite a few.
Okay, well, we have about, um, seven minutes until our first executive session and they're gonna be boom, boom, boom. So if anybody needs a stream break or anything.
I made a motion break. I received an email from Nancy at the state about the opioid settlements. And that it was basically an update to all of the entities about Purdue, the ones that you guys just asked to to do. And they were saying that that settlement would classify into the same restrictions as the state's settlements. So all of the funding is the same, all of the what you can use the money for is the same and to put it in the same fund.
Nice.
So it's cuz I was worried like, when we get the money for that one, should we keep it separate from the state ones? That thing was together.
That's good.
So we have to do one report and include that one. So I got my questions answered on that, so.
Awesome. And that could be applicable to the county attorney too, right? That's what I thought.
Yeah, there's a list of
Awesome.
List of allowable expenses.
Alright, well, we have three minutes, but we might as well go ahead and get this going cuz um, why not? Everyone's here. Um, so the eleven o'clock, Eric, uh, non-elected subject to wages. Commission clerk, HR finance.
You said HR and finance?
Mm-hmm.
How long?
Thirty minutes. I I don't think there's anything else. Based on the timeline, we're gonna roll right into road and bridge and like
Okay.
This executive, executive, executive. Just heads up, so you're not like back and forth for two hours or three hours.
Okay, I'll move the board of county commissioners recess into executive session and
Um, it's ten fifty-eight.
Ten fifty-eight AM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, county clerk, HR and finance director.
All second. They've been seconded. All those in favor say ayes.
Aye.
Aye. Passive. Hey. Alright, thanks you guys. Um, we are, uh, ready for our next executive session. Commission, Fraser and Finance.
And that's fifteen?
Yes.
We're ready, miss?
Yeah.
I'll move that the board of county commissioners recess recess into executive session at eleven thirty-one. AM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement. And those present will be three commissioners, um, financial director and who else? Appraiser.
Well, second, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Okay. Um, we have Mission, IT, Finance, thirty minutes. I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll move at the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at eleven forty-eight. AM uh, to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in fifteen minutes in the commission room. And those present will be three commissioners, IT and finance.
To confirm, is it fifteen or thirty? Thirty. All second, um. Thirty minutes. Yeah, it's been moved in. Do we need thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes, I said fifteen.
Yeah.
Probably thirty.
Okay. Um, all second. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes for thirty minutes. Alright, we are back in open session followed by an executive session, uh, twelve fifteen.
Fifteen minutes?
Uh, no, it's thirty, but it's on at twelve fifteen.
Oh, sorry, alright. I misunderstood.
Yep.
Okay. I'll go there. Your kids, oh, doc, just gonna say when your kids start school, but they start school, when my kids start school. Are you ready?
Oh, yeah. They're ready. They're excited to see their friends and we like routine and it's tough.
I haven't even got school supplies yet.
I I got them. The list came out and like, let's do this, let's get this.
Eh, I'll get it. This week, this weekend, alright.
Ready?
Yep.
I'll move that the board of county commissioners recess into executive session at twelve nineteen. EM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes. In the commission room of the courthouse basement, most present will be three commissioners, uh, county attorney and finance director.
Yeah, well, second, it's been moved in second and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. There he is.
Okay.
Right.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All the time.
Okay, yes, we're back in open session, um. Is there anything else? No other need for any executive sessions today?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Is there anything that we need to coordinate for the fair Friday night?
Or for next week?
It's this Friday.
Yeah.
Is it Friday, Saturday, Friday, oh, parades Friday night? Five o'clock, or seven o'clock, I said five. Make sure I got that down, right? And they set up over, you know where it's at? The middle, new building with a middle school, um, do you know where the uni- union church is?
Oh.
Just about a block north of the union church and on the side street there.
So next week, we're journeying with you at eleven.
Okay.
That's what we had planned to to do budget.
You saying that's good or bad?
No, I mean, it has to be.
Yes, I agree.
We have no other choice, but I was just trying to reiterate that to you guys that there's really no other things we can add to next week.
No, it's getting pretty close. The other I mean, cuz the goal was to have some numbers lowered before the hearing. Um.
Yeah.
So if you wanna do that, we gotta stick to the timeline.
Okay. Alright, so then nothing else? We need to prep. Next week, we have Pat with the resolution on the RHID and RP verbiage on that application. And then the commissioners asked to talk about the motor vehicle processing. Um, and then beyond that, then we'll just go with Mark, um, the remainder of the day, starting at eleven AM. Just us and Mark and trying to get down to.
I can shoot out an email again like I did last week to department heads and say
I can, I'll be those.
We got forty minutes, like
just I can do you at ten forty.
Yeah, I just, I got two.
At ten twenty-five.
Okay.
Or ten forty, I I I just put twenty minutes into the conversation. Do you want that next week or do you want the next week after?
What conversation?
For the motor vehicle processing.
It could be either.
Whatever works for.
Would it? Should I go talk to, uh, mine before then to let her know what kind of what we're in our system?
Or you can, yeah, sure.
Well, okay, I will.
Requester, commissioner, or sorry, road and bridge. Department, road and bridge, we've been purchase orders. Do you know which ones?
I got all right here. I have everything here. I have the permits. So there's nothing executive we need to have with
Well, that.
calling a venture or anything that's going on. In the treasuries or?
Yeah, but I felt like we need a recap, like with us.
Yeah, cuz the discussions today were just kind of figure out some answers.
Well, speaking of all the appropriations, yeah, today or?
I think so.
Yeah, after Joe.
Mm-hmm.
You have five minutes, Joe, for the O's, ten minutes?
Everything's right here for me, for me, we get to the day. I have a problem, it's not in the agenda, but I didn't get those in on time. And on the backside has the, uh, well, yeah, what we signed, it's all clear back page, it's been signed.
Just you and me, Eric, just you and them. What was it?
Which one is this? Let me, let me.
Bridge two ninety.
Two ninety is the one at the
But.
three fourteen of by the end of the, it's supposed to start September, right, the first of September. And, uh, I don't know. Do you guys want the POs as soon as we've signed the agreements or do you, how soon do you want them?
Well, and I don't.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but also I don't know that we want to do a purchase order for the entire amount.
Okay, so this is, this is a reimbursement. We pay. We send in reimbursements, they pay us back.
Okay, so just for the instance and and using a a pipe installation of the you find things you're not happy with and you're like, no, I'm not, like, so if we turn this loose.
So that will be, uh, like payments we did with tunks.
Okay.
They will send in the payments that, you know, when they get it, the engineers are inspecting it and we go from there.
You need this whole amount because you'll take this, then submit it for reimbursement, which takes.
So then we'll come in with a PO. So let's say they want a hundred thousand dollars. Alright, so then I'd have to come in with a PO, which can either be that one, that's something I wanna talk about later, how we wanna do this. And then every month, we can turn in. One reimbursement, so if, uh. There's three hundred thousand in that month, I will turn it in at the end of the month. K dot will reimburse us. Minus our percentage for our co-pay. And that's how it's gonna be with, uh, with, uh. The start of Ottawa Road, we've already got reimbursed some. But, uh, but I wanna, that's why I wanna discuss how we wanna do the P O's. So that everybody's on the same page and we understand what's going on.
Cause I know we signed the contract for the full amount, but on purchase orders, is it better to do it incrementally like you're saying?
Well, see, that's. That's what I wanna discuss.
Yeah.
How we wanna do that.
To me, that would feel better.
Because we used to, we used, we used, we used to take. The entire amount and got a P O, but we can also. However, you guys and Mark, uh, some input, if you have a idea how we think we should do these, do we take? The first check off of that and subtract it and then that's the remainder? Or how we wanna do those? Cause it gets confusing with as much as what's going on. And I don't remember what, remember what's this one is.
This one's engineering.
Yeah, that's the one that, uh. Yeah.
And the engineering, is that gonna be built in a?
It will be, it will come out in in different increments.
Yeah.
Sometimes they're under, under my, uh, spending the lilies and sometimes they're over. So, but however you guys wanna do those, we need to figure out a way that. It's this is it and everybody's happy with it.
My preference would be incrementally, just because then we can keep it top of mind, top of discussion, follow along in the process.
So the initial one you don't want for the whole amount or?
So does the contract cover us for that though, like, okay, we sign a contract, so we're obligating ourselves to seven hundred thousand for this bridge. But then purchase orders.
We learned that with ARPA, you can obligate all day long, but it's when the expense happens, is when. The few, the approval is.
So, okay, so do you suggest the whole project in one purchase order? I mean.
I mean, we don't do that. This is about the only department that we use that type of thing for, so, cause every other department doesn't have. Projects, I guess, like this.
So I guess my fear, right, is turning it all loose, if something we're, we weren't. Happy with or didn't like. And then it's easier to have change orders if it's all turned loose. I don't know, I just, I I'm a worse.
We'll see, and that's what I wanted to talk about here, when we go to workshop, how, how we wanna do some of these things, so it best fits all of us. But that is a total, uh, the Kansas local bridge improvement program, that's. Uh, we've, we've. Have to re, send in reimbursements, we have to pay.
Get all of this back?
We will get. Six hundred and some thousand.
So then.
Six hundred fifty six, seven thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars is what we should get back.
So if we were to approve this all in one and you submit it.
So it will be, I will still have to come to you because it will have to be in incrementally, because they won't, they won't have the bridge done in a month, but they're gonna want paid.
But they won't reimburse us in full either, they're gonna reimburse us incrementally as the project goes.
Within a month, whatever we pay out in that month, we turn it in and usually in about two or three weeks, we get the money back.
I think that's how we should do ours on our end, I think, but.
I think just keeping it the same how we've always done it, like with ARPA, we had. Even if it was two dollars, you had to approve the two dollars.
Yeah, so you don't wanna prove the seven hundred, you just wanna do it as it happens, yeah.
However, let's think about this, what if there's something that's six thousand dollars? Joe may not need your approval for the six thousand because that's under his threshold. So. You won't see that come across a P O like that.
So then we just need, when we have these projects like this, maybe we just have like. Once a month, like a monthly bridge two ninety update and you go through that with us, like, hey. Of the seven hundred and thirty-one, we've done X, Y, and Z.
Okay, but if, but if within that month that they're requesting their money. I'm gonna have to come with a P O to get the money sent to them.
Yeah, but to his example of the six thousand that you could do without us, cause yours is seventy-five hundred.
Right.
So, how would we know that? Well, you would just give us that update, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because if, if you're saying. Like, I guess what I'm trying to say is if you like did a tracking sheet. And the P O's that you guys sign all collectively don't add up to that amount, well, why not? Well, it's because he paid more. Paid for a few P O's that was under his threshold.
Well, I think we just wanna have a good handle at the end of the project, like what was estimated in, like estimated cost. What we approved for and what was ending costs so we can.
No, I'm, I'm all for, we just need to figure something out to where we're doing all the P O's the same, and we're gonna have. Uh, you know. The rest of Ottawa Road throughout all this is gonna be paid out. You know, even though we won't be getting reimbursed after this first part, it's still gonna be paid out incrementally.
I think having, keeping it the same way we've been doing is a better way of tracking it. Cause then we've got a P O forever.
Forever, that's incrementally then.
And, and I think for you is when you're not here and we are like, wait, where did this come from? And it's this May or last year contract, so maybe even down here, we could put like original contract dated. This for this amount, then it's gonna trigger for us, like, oh, this is part of. The contract you and I approved last year, you know.
But we've done it, done it differently.
Yep.
So you just tell me.
Because.
How you, how you, I look at it as if you approve the total amount. It's been that project's approved.
In the contract.
Well, that's how I was doing the P O, and then I could, but. I, I don't care, uh, we just gotta come up with something. Uh, sign in the full now. Right now or next week, what is that? At that, at, at that point, you still have to come back.
Right.
With purchase order.
Yeah.
Regardless.
Why?
Yeah.
Well, some kind of approval. We're approving the total amount, but. To Casey's point, then there's no.
Then I say you just do it incrementally.
Okay, I was gonna say, if there was another.
I think so too.
If there's another way to update us, that would be fine, but yeah, if, if, if we don't know.
So, I guess when we're signing the contract, we're agreeing with the company that we're. Agreeing to that price and the, and the date and everything when we do it.
No extra above that.
Yes.
Right. Change order would.
Squares us with the entity we're doing, but then the P O is actually the tracking for us and, and. Uh, so we're getting that tracked both through you and and through payment. By having a P O that matches those payments.
And having conversations of like you've been before, like, hey, we, we, we're due for a final payment, I'm not sending it. Because they have to do X, Y, and Z before I'll sign off that we're good, like, so just, uh, it just increases our communication, which I think is positive.
So then like on some of the, uh, engineering, they get to a certain stage, it's like six thousand dollars. So do you still want me to come in with a P O on that or how do you wanna do that?
I think how it's written in the policy, it's under your threshold, you approve it, but just let them know.
And we just track it, cause we do track it, so. But it's our, it's however, I just wanna get it to where everybody understands, that's why I started putting the agreements on there. Because it is hard. For everybody to keep track of it when we've signed it three or four months ago, there's so much stuff going on in all the departments.
This size of a project, do they have it broken out that like at this point?
Yes.
This amount.
So if you, if you look at the engineering, in me, one of those agreements. So construction engineering. Well, this construction doesn't, but the design engineering does, when you get to this point. Then it's this much, and when you get to the next point, it's this much, but the, the, uh. The, uh, construction doesn't, so you want me to change these then? Or we just leave them alone and when we get our first bill? I come in with a P O. Okay, so we won't even have to do these.
And I mean, you can put additional verbiage if you want, like contract dated this day for this amount and then. I'm trying to remember what we were doing that for. Was it senior, maybe senior, I can't remember, where you would see.
Oh, the, um. I did it for the bond payment.
Yeah, that's it, that's, that was what it was, where you see the total. And then this is how much it is, yeah.
So, all you want is the amount for the P O that day? Okay, there's no other totals, no nothing. Okay. I mean, here's the other side, so theoretically, for this job. We could have, how many P O's then? I mean, how, uh, uh, how often? So you, so we turn them in, we will, we will turn them. I mean, I'm just, just an estimate, could it be a dozen or? Gonna be more than that. You could probably. See, that's the question. This is the biggest bridge. Not that I don't mind seeing you, Joe, it's just that, do we really want him?
Time.
Yeah, it's his time, do we really need him in here to tell us, I need ten thousand dollars? Fifty times before this is over with between now and the time the job. Is over, that's the question I have, do we really? Is that really where you wanna go with this, to have every single thing signed off after we've already signed off the? The total amount.
What did you need though? You needed.
This is just kinda how we've done.
Incrementally to turn in monthly on what we've paid.
Alright, so. The best thing I think would be for me to get a hold of the engineering for, when these projects start. And find out that what increments are we gonna be expected to make pay. And then if we have, well, the reimbursement, I have the money in special highway to take care of this. Because this money gets put back in and then we start the project. For next spring and I've gotta have the million dollars to cover the reimbursements from them. So I, I will have the money. It's just when I will turn it in once a month, you can, they want you to turn it in. Once a month, and it has to be at least a thousand dollars, well, if I've got three hundred thousand dollars in there. I don't wanna turn it in the first check that's ten thousand bucks or a hundred, you understand what I'm, I wanna do it. Get that back and put it where it needs to be before the next project starts.
So to your point, if we were to approve him in full. Then he could come at the end of the month with a bridge two ninety recap for us. One time to say, hey, of this.
Yeah.
You're keeping track of it anyway, you give us a snapshot of what's happening. Yeah. Which is, like, which is the total point of what the purchase orders incrementally were anyway, is just keeping us. When someone asks, hey, what's going on with that bridge out there, like, you know the answer because people ask.
Okay, if someone, a department head sends in, has a payment for six, it's within their spending limit. So, do they submit something like a P O that knows it, so you can track that or?
So that was gonna be my next thing, I think we're, we need to change this a little bit, so. That every time there's a payment, scan in the contract with it. Because I don't.
Well, that's like I did the day.
I won't know.
My thing is, cause I. I know you do a good job tracking these things, but I also think that it's good to have a secondary.
Yeah.
Thing, especially on a grant or something like that, that we gotta second, separate set of eyes.
With the, with the grant, how that works is, uh, K dot sends us. A reimbursement form and it has the total dollar of the grant. And it shows our responsibility and theirs, and when we send in the first reimbursement. It will show what they're paying and it'll show our portion. And it has kept track of every time, those grants are documented. To the point where if we're doing a reimbursable and. You know exactly where you're at and where K dot's at, and they check them and, uh, but I'll do, I'll do whatever you guys wanna do, I mean. I guess.
No, that makes sense, I mean, and if we have an update monthly, we'll just. Put you as from the beginning of the project to then standard, you're on our. Last week of the month or, or whatever, to come back and tell us.
So are you guys gonna initiate that or is Joe feeding to the machine?
The meeting, Joe.
You just need to remember to do that.
Which, I mean, when you do your end of month reimbursement, just get on the agenda and say, here's the update, right?
Okay.
Okay, so do you want me to call for a motion? Good conversations, no, I mean, it's good, because it's like.
Department at its time is that we need to.
Hundred percent, it's just.
And if it's just a, a payment there, you don't necessarily have to be there, you can have to send in a thing or and say.
With Mark.
This, yeah, uh. But sometimes, what I was kind of concerned about is he may not be able to answer the questions that you guys may have.
Yeah.
And that's true, that's where.
You send it to us by the Thursday, then any questions we have, we can ask.
And usually, if you look in your emails, I will have the information you need. In the email and if from now on, these agreements are gonna be with every P O.
And that'll be good.
And then it's dated and everybody understands and they can read it and look it over and know where they're at.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order. That will come out of our special highway fund. To Ebert Construction for Bridge two ninety replacement. In the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. This amount is from our contract agreement dated December third, twenty twenty-four. Do I have? And that amount matches our contract agreement, do I have a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes.
And this is the biggest bridge that we've done from them. This is the, uh, most expensive through this program. That, that we've done, usually, a lot of them that were done were Husker Steel Bridges and they were like a hundred eighty thousand dollars or. Yeah, but they've changed this to where our on-system bridges can be put into the Kansas local bridge improvement. Where before there was no money for on-system bridges, and the on-system bridges. Are you, you're major collectors, like most of them on your surface runes and. Uh, because there was no, there was no money for them. Yeah, I'm trying to picture this one that you're talking about down there, is this the one that? If you go back to the Indian hut. Before you turn left, as if. And then we have to leave that one. And we had to donate it for historical struggle.
And are these two separate projects? Uh, this is the engineering for it, so I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order, um. That will come out of the special bridge fund, um, to Schwab Eaton. For Bridge two ninety construction engineering for ninety-six thousand eight hundred. That amount matches the contract for consultant services. Um, that we signed and approved on May twentieth of twenty twenty-five for this project. Have a motion to approve.
So we, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Three to zero, what did you guys decide to do for a workaround while they're racing it? Cause at one point they were looking at a shoe fly.
No, they're, we're, the bridge is being built north of the old one.
Okay.
That's all done. That's all done, and the way we can keep the road open while it's being built.
And then you'll demo the old one or then?
No, the old one has to stay there, yes.
And it'll be marked off for no, no traffic.
Yes, it, the, the road will be, the road, they won't be able to get to it. They can walk to it and look at it, know what happens when it falls in.
That's gonna be standard even.
Yeah, so.
So I'm taking him off for next week. Okay. Alright, anything else we need to cover today, um. Before we adjourn and do, um, Roden Bridge Budget Workshop and Finance Workshop. Nope. And you guys will re, make your revisions to that survey. Cause we have to have a final, uh, actually, let's put that on there for next week.
Yeah.
Alright, so from ten forty. For twenty minutes, we're gonna do our final survey.
Okay, perfect, so we're full, yeah. For twenty minutes. Hopefully, for twenty minutes.
Hopefully, final draft, yeah. Final draft, yeah. Okay. Right. Okay, so with that, no unfinished business, we talked about that, uh, our Addison County Notice of Hearing to Exceed Revenue Neutral Rate. Will be August twenty-sixth at six P M at Memorial Hall, I need to look it. To make sure, yeah, okay, um. No resolutions, no more executive sessions, so look for a motion to adjourn into the Roden Bridge Workshop.
So move.
So.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.